Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the meeting of Simpson County Board of Education. I'm Jim Flynn, Superintendent. I appreciate those that are with us tonight here in the audience and those watching on television from home as we conduct the business of Simpson County Schools. I want to make a few announcements. I'd first start off by thanking all of our schools for hosting our wonderful Veterans Day programs last week. And I'd like to thank the veterans and the public that were able to attend these events. And I'd also like to thank our students because they were very respectful and courteous and serious about these programs, understanding the importance and gravity of those who've served our country and sacrificed for our freedoms that we have here. I'd also like to congratulate Senior Matty Alexander, who was sworn in to the National Guard at the high school's Veterans Day ceremony. Congratulations, Matty. Also to recognize Franklin Simpson alumni and others who've made significant contributions to our school system. We have opened up nominations for the Franklin Simpson Hall of Fame. We'll be recognizing our fifth class of Hall of Fame members in the spring of 2017. And again, it's a wonderful way for our school system to celebrate its alumni and significant contributors who make such a difference in our schools, in our community. Nominations can be found via our website or here at the office, at the central office here. And we'll accept those nominations until Saturday, December 31st. And they could be dropped by or mailed to the central office. The Franklin Simpson High School Student Council will be presenting the Golden Gala, a formal dinner and dance for folks in our community ages 50 and older. The gala will be at the Roxy Theater on December 9th from 5:00 to 7:00. The cost to attend is $10 a person. And if you're interested, please RSVP to Jessica Johnson at the high school at (586) 3273 before November 30th. Again, that event will be on December 9th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Roxy. And to contact Jessica Johnson at the high school at (586) 3273 for more information. We're excited about the opening of our Franklin Simpson Exploratorium. It's right over here adjacent to the high school on our main campus. We've had lots of different student activities over there. And we're very excited to announce we're going to host two upcoming events on Saturdays, on a Saturday coming up. It'll be Saturday, December 10th. We're having the Big Thinkers Camp for students in grades 2 through 5, 2nd through 5th grade. A morning full of science experiments, problem solving, and exploring centered around the Wintry theme. So the camp again is Saturday, December 10th from 8:00 to 11:00 for 2nd through 5th graders. Then in the afternoon, from noon to 3:00, we're having the Exploratory Escape for 6th grade through 12th grade. And these students will be using problem solving skills to see if they can escape from the exploratory there. So it ought to be a fun event again on Saturday, December 10th from 12:00 to 3:00. Both camps will be held at our exploratory here on the Franklin Simpson High School campus. The fees are $25 a student, and that includes a tee shirt and refreshments. Registration packets can be picked up at schools' offices. And more information can be found by contacting Robin Hollingsworth at Community Education at (586) 3809, or emailing robin@robin.hollingsworth@simpson.kyschools.us. I'd also like to congratulate our Franklin Simpson High School choir members, Matty Arney, Abby Bills, Katie Bunch, Hannah Cole, and Emma Slosser for attending the ACDA Kentucky All-State Choir held at Skypack on October 29th. And a shout out to all of the Simpson County students who were part of the Franklin Simpson Arts Council production of Cinderella. If you saw that, you were probably like me, blown away with the talent that our students exhibited at that event. I'd also give some shout outs to our RoboCats, the Wildcat Robotics Teams that represented Simpson County Schools at the first Lego League Regional Competition at Western Kentucky University on November 12th. The RoboCats Red Team came in first place. They won robot performance as well as being named the Grand Champions. And then the RoboCats and the Wildcat Robotics will be moving on to state competition. So congratulations and good luck at state. I'd also like to congratulate Franklin Simpson High School graduate and WKU golfer Mary Joyner. She won her second individual title this season. It was named the Conference USA Women's Golfer of the Week earlier this month. And we're proud of Mary's accomplishments as she competes collegiately in golf at WKU. Wish her continued success. I'd also like to give a shout out, congratulations to Franklin Simpson High School teacher Sheena Circe. She's the Franklin Simpson High School's advisor for the yearbook and newspaper, and she was named the 2016 Advisor of the Year at WKU Scholar Day. And then the Regional Championship Football Game this Friday with Franklin Simpson High School taking on South Warren for the Regional Championship again is at 7:00 PM. The gates open at 5:00 PM and all tickets are $5. So come out and support our undefeated 12-0 Wildcat football team. And this, just a quick reminder that our schools will be closed for Thanksgiving break Wednesday, November 23rd through Friday, November 25th. Wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday. And that concludes the announcement. I'll turn it over to Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I'd like to welcome you on behalf of the school board. And it's good to see everyone here, especially the students. It's always an honor and pleasure to have you here with us. We call this meeting the order, and the first order of business is approval of the agenda. Next, any changes to the agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Passed. So next is the presentation of teaching learning from the Franklin Simpson Middle School.
So we just wanted to talk about our Williamsburg trip with the Advanced Social Studies case. This is the fourth year that we have taken the Advanced Social Studies group to Williamsburg, Jamestown, and Yorktown. It's an opportunity for students to get a hands-on experience on learning what life was like in the colonies. And so these students go, we let them tell here a second about each of the days that we spent there. But their big takeaway project is on the second or the third day that we're there is to research a certain colonial trade or a colonial job, interview the people who are experts, and then they themselves become experts. And December 2nd, we'll be at the facility putting on our Colonial Fair there. So they'll be dressed up, they'll have hands-on activities, and have booths and have worked a couple of months on this. So I'll let them sort of tell about each of the days we left last Wednesday night and came back on Sunday night. So they're going to talk about that today's Thursday through Saturday.
On the first day of our trip, we toured Jamestown, then Yorktown. We arrived at Jamestown first and received a tour of the Powhatan Village. The village was small and had a weaving tent and a pit where you started to cook all of their food. The biggest house was the chief's. It had more skins and rooms than any of the rest. After that, we toured the English ships. We had the privilege to look at some of the tools sailors used during the time on the water. The next part of the tour was the Smith's Fort, named after John Smith. In the fort, they had actual buildings and houses with beds and fireplaces. The only weapons used were the muskets, and those muskets were more advanced than any of the Powhatan weapons. At the end of the tour, we viewed the museum portion and saw different tools, weapons, resources that they used. After we left Jamestown, we journeyed to Yorktown. The tour there was quite the same, but the lifestyle was totally different. When we toured around Yorktown, went through and saw various buildings, houses, and whatnot. Our tour guide showed us the treatments, what the treatments were like for wounds and sicknesses. Afterwards, we toured through the newly opened Yorktown Museum. This museum was packed with little mini games and questions to answer. The Yorktown Museum, in my opinion, had more information and details than the Jamestown Museum. Overall, that day and the whole trip was a super fun experience for me.
On the second day, we engaged with the environment, with the people, and with the history of Williamsburg. We explored Williamsburg by doing an interactive scavenger hack, which allowed us to be key points in Williamsburg. We learned about historic figures and cases with the witch trial, in which we got to actually take a role in and decide if they did defend it. This allowed us to further understand Williamsburg and its history. My favorite activity that we did on the second day would have had to been the witch trials because we got to actually witness as well be a part of an actual case that occurred. It was a very well acted performance, and I loved watching the judge and the witch argue.
On the last day of our Williamsburg trip, we began by touring the William and Mary College. It is the second oldest college in the country, and it was opened in 1693. Some people that have attended this school were Thomas Jefferson, James Monroe, John Marshall, Henry Clay, and John Tyler. It was amazing to think that I was standing in the same room where they stood. Secondly, we broke up into our touring groups to research our project for the Colonial Fair. My project is education, and I was able to go up to people to learn more about it. Every character I went up to actually made it seem like we were in the colonial times. And if you would mention something that they were not aware of, they would be oblivious to it. I asked one man what year it was, and he thought it was such a weird question. He said it was 1781, and he guessed, he said, "I guess that time does stand still here." After touring, we went up to Shields Tavern to experience a colonial meal. We received a traditional meal of chicken and vegetables with a special treat of ice cream while being entertained by a violinist. Afterwards, we attended a ghost story, and we got to learn about rumors and legends that happened in the town. We were able to see an original building while being entertained with creepy ghost stories. I was so glad I got to go to Williamsburg. It was an amazing learning experience.
So I just want to thank Simpson County Schools for letting us have that opportunity and helping pay for some of the buses to keep that cost relatively cheap for the students to go. And hopefully, I know myself and Mr. Flynn, looking at what we can possibly do in the spring, not as a big version of a plume, but somewhat still a trip with some intensity here, so closer, but then also do a little trip there. So that's all we have.
Well, okay. We might have some questions before we move on.
Did you burn a witch to stake?
Was the witch guilty?
We paid her not guilty.
Oh, that's good. You are compassionate. So what was your favorite part? Ashton said it hurts when the witch tries.
Mine probably was the tour of Yorktown.
Yorktown, yeah. What about you, Carl?
Probably the ghost story.
Got to go to the witch? Yeah. Well, you know, these trips I've reminded, because my daughter's been on this trip this year, and how powerful these kinds of experiences are. So I want to say thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for organizing that, and the other teachers that went on the trip, and the parents that went also to help supervise. And then most importantly, the students that took, you know, gave up their weekend and time to go. That's something you'll remember for a long time, and you'll look back saying, "I've actually been there," so that's really cool. So, good job. Thank you.
The next is the visitor comments. If anybody would like to speak.
Okay. To keep the board and the public up to date with many of our key metrics and, you know, other kinds of reports that are pertinent to our business, we have the follow-up reports. We have our attendance report, and we have our quarterly truancy report. Mr. Kildren is here. Do you have any comments on that?
On that one, no.
Okay. And then we do have our quarterly discipline and suspension reports, so we keep our eye on that. Mr. Kildren's also here. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I would. Just, the board has asked last time when we got to this report, just to give updates on the progress towards our specific goals at each school. So I just kind of want to update the board on that. I'll start with the high school. Looking at their data, some of the things I see that are very positive is that referrals were down by 100 compared to the three-year average, and their suspension numbers are down a little bit. An area of concern that we saw, and this is something we do, you know, we always look for, okay, what looks good? What are some concerns? And what's our progress towards our goal? They had a large number of referrals for skipping lunch detention. And so we said, "Well, if lunch detention is something that we want to use as a punishment, then we need to make sure that we put systems in place to get them there." And so that's something they're looking at, is how many we get that number of referrals for. After they get referred for something, they get lunch detention. It's a measure to try to keep them from going to ISI and being out of class, whether they get ISI for missing lunch detention. Then we kind of missed our purpose there. And so they're looking at procedures to alleviate that. On their goals, their goal was to decrease the number of students. One goal, decrease the number of students. They got five more referrals last year through the first quarter. They had four students for five or more referrals this year through the first quarter. There was one, so they're on track there. And they wanted to have fewer than 1,000 referrals for the school year, which is a pretty ambitious goal, but they are on track and actually way ahead of pace to meet that. I'll jump over to Lincoln Elementary. Some things that we saw that were good, overall referrals are down by eight compared to last year and compared to the three-year average. Referrals for 4th graders are down by 12 compared to the three-year average, and referrals for 5th graders are down by four compared to the three-year average. Their goals, number one, was to decrease the number of referrals for defiance and disrespect type behaviors by 10% through the first quarter of the school year. They had seven referrals for defiance, disrespect compared to 10 last year, so that's ahead of the goal for 10%. That's 30%. And they also wanted to decrease the number of referrals in the cafeteria by 20%. They changed up some of their procedures and some of their supervision strategies in there. And they actually had no, zero referrals in the cafeteria during the first quarter of the school year. So obviously, they're on track to meet that goal as well. Jumping over to Simpson Elementary. One thing I just wanted to celebrate with them was that they had no suspension events through the first quarter, which I wouldn't mention just because that wasn't one of their goals, was to reduce the number of suspension events. Specifically, looking at some of their struggles last year, they felt like it was in their special ed population, they were getting their highest number of referrals. So they wanted to reduce the number of special ed students with three or more referrals. Through the first quarter, they had two special ed students with three or more referrals compared to last year. At the same time, they had three. So I mean, that's kind of, you know, not an indicator either way really, it's where we'll finish, but we're certainly not in bad shape yet. Through the first quarter, 13 different special ed students have received a referral compared to 12 different special ed students last year. So again, kind of on a pretty similar pace to last year. And then they also wanted to reduce their suspension events by 50%. Last year, they had six suspension events through the first quarter compared to none this year. So they're on track there. They have had some in the second quarter, obviously, but I will go ahead and confess to that, but they had none through the first quarter. At the middle school, some positive trends that we saw, we had 95% of our students that had zero or one referrals through the first quarter. Referrals for 7th graders were way down. Some of our concerns, the overall referrals were up. 8th grade referrals were up. And we have 11 students that account for 42% of all of our referrals at the middle school. Looking at their goals, one of their goals was to decrease the number of referrals for defiance and disruption by 10%. Through the first quarter, there were 51 referrals for defiance and disruption compared to 32 last year. So obviously, not on track to meet that goal this time. And to decrease suspension events by 20% through the first quarter this year, we had about the same number of suspension events as last year, so we're not yet on track to meet that goal. I will say that we met with middle school administration in the past week to just talk about, you know, their discipline data and their goals. And, you know, the fact that we're not on track right now, and, you know, we've got some plans in place to hopefully address that and get that back in line. So that's kind of where we are.
Any questions?
On the 8th grade, you said that the referrals were up. What percentage did they go up this year?
I want to say they have, I don't have a number in front of it. It's 50 more. I want to say it's about two and a half times that they had about, was it 20? Like, I don't remember exactly. I had it pulled up, and I was looking at it a minute ago. Are you going to pull it up, Dr. Flynn?
Yes.
The number's 50 more, but I'm not sure what. It was a 17 to 67?
Yeah.
That what it was, okay. So, yeah, about three or four times. But if you look at the 7th graders, what were they, 7th graders, Ms. Estes?
They were 37.
Yeah, so they were, so they're not, they're still up from where they were last year, but it was a, it was a high group to start with. So the fact that they're just up is not that concerning as much as how much they're up.
I lied. It was 11. Sorry.
What's that?
It was 11.
At 7th grade?
14, 15, 16, 15, 16, they went to 17.
You're right. No, it's 37 to 67.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. That's right.
15, 16 to 17.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's kind of like they went from 47 in 6th grade to 37 in 7th grade to 67. And one of the questions that we ask is, again, the majority of students up there are not getting referrals. So that's kind of our, you know, that's a good thing.
And I heard 11, did I hear that correctly? 11 students?
Yes. Account for 42%.
42%.
Yes, ma'am.
So those are some things that we're, you know, what we're looking at is obviously that what we're doing with those 11 is not working. So we've got to change the strategy somehow there.
It's not pervasive.
No, it's not.
Specific.
The other thing we're kind of looking at is what is it that's giving referral, you know? So in some cases, it's, you know, it's kind of, you know, silliness that we might can address one way. In other cases, you know, there are some situations where, you know, we really need to change, you know, maybe change the placement, you know, because our obligation by law is the least restricted environment that students can be successful. So sometimes we've got to say, "Well, maybe this, this environment's, you know, not restricted enough." That's a given infrastructure. So, you know, we're looking at some of those things in our continuum of services that we're offering to students and how we're delivering that. So, you know, we're working with them at all levels, so Ms. Maxwell, Ms. Smith, Mr. Kildren, we're all looking at that, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joe. Okay, the next report is our personnel report. Dr. Makatashi, any questions there?
We had one person that got hired Monday and then left the next day? Yes, ma'am.
They were short-term timers.
They were very generous, though, when they said that it was, it just wasn't a suitable fit for them. I mean, they should have, and glad the decision was made.
I agree.
And I do want to compliment Dr. Makatashi. You know, those kinds of situations, she reaches out to them, talks to them, tries to understand what, you know, what happened.
That was thoughtful.
And we have a, we have an excellent interview process, but in some of those cases, it's like a face-to-face, and this one was, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We also have our out-of-district student trips, and that also includes our nice call schedules. You can see there's lots back here coming up. Our out-of-district staff and administrative travel. Our daycare financial report, food service financial report, our monthly district athletic report, our monthly vendor report, our monthly reconciliation and construction reconciliation reports, our fixed assets reports for Franklin Elementary RTC, Preschool Kids First, our monthly visa charge report. And then we do have our Learning Community Day reports from October 10th and November 7th. Dr. Kershner put those together. Appreciate that.
And I would like to say something about that. I really appreciate you putting those reports together because we got to read, see, visualize what's going on, and that really helped. And it wasn't just like kids had the day off and, you know, it was, it was meaningful, and I really appreciate that.
One thing I'd like to comment on there is, you know, we had a really great review on our accreditation report, and we're really proud of that. But there were a couple of things when we, you know, asked them to come, we said we want to better our best. And one of, one of their suggestions for an improvement priority for us was, you know, that vertical teaming piece and developing that curriculum, you know, K-12. And so, Dr. Kershner, can you just comment a little bit on that work that's happened recently?
I haven't, you could talk, just gave you the schedule, although the teachers have got a party too, because I thought you were going to see it later. I don't like that. We had five different content groups, which is pretty all-inclusive K-12. So it was exciting, lots of juggling to get everybody where they needed to be, and our whole district teaching and our team split up and kind of covered those spaces. But it's a really good beginning, conversations, kind of reexamining the standards where already there are some gaps we might want to fill, where some training checkpoints between schools and not make sure they're hit. So we also, we left each of those sessions with a plus delta in what do you see as next steps in your content area? So the CIA team and our monthly meeting took those plus delta sheets and took the next steps, and that's going to be what we do in March. So we see another day that looks a little bit like that in March to take the next step and all kind of at different places depending on their content. But we'll try to use their feedback and plan the next part of the year.
Were there any, was there any feedback from the teachers? They really enjoy that and get to work with other groups?
I'm sorry.
Oh, because it seemed like for so long we were talking about, "We need to talk, we need to talk with each other now." Like, wow, everybody's talking.
It was very positive, and we had let each of the presenters clean at some time in the day where they talked to the grade level for the most part. Social studies is a little different way you were used to, but for the most part, they talked to the person below them and the person above them. So like a group of grades 3, 4, and 5, teachers would be together, and those are really good conversations. So I think we got some little feedback, things that we can fix and do a little bit better in the next round of the league, but a lot of very positive comments.
Well, you know, and over time, we hope we can continue this, like, you know, for example, Mr. Mitchell and his colleagues that are knocking the social studies scores, you know, out of the park, and they can, you know, they can share those strategies and practices that are helping them achieve those kinds of results and kind of spread that, you know, the lessons learned that they, you know, they figured out in their curriculum and the delivery of it, you know, across all grade levels. So, you know, we're hoping it'll foster kind of that professional learning community on a vertical scale. And I think it was a really good session. It looked like the feedback was good, and I want to thank Shalina and her team for organizing that because that's a lot of, you know, there were a lot of moving parts and getting people, you know, because there are a lot of things that go on on those days, as you can tell. So, but appreciate that effort, and thank you all. Okay, then we have our review of our needs assessment process. You know, annually, we ask our schools to look at what they need. You know, annually, we ask our schools to look at what they need to, you know, to meet our goals, and those will be due on March thirty-first to the board, and then that'll also kind of coincide when the session's, you know, wrapped up, in case there's any implications from the general assembly, and then we can make our budget decisions if we go into our tentative budget cycle. So I wanted you to review that, and if you had any comments on that, I appreciate those, if not, we'll, we'll get those distributed and get that process started. And then the last review is our emergency school closing procedures. Shane Holliday at Penn State K O said it might be a fairly mild winter, snow, and some other prognosticators that are telling me different, but I think they enjoy telling me differently, that it's going to snow a lot, so, that means I want to get up real early, Brian Schukel, and, as he joins me, along with Robert White and Tanny Bilton, but anyway, just in case we have to close schools, we have these procedures in place, we want to share those with you all, and then if there's no further feedback on that, we'll get those, get that out to our, all of our shareholders in our school community, and so everybody knows what's going on in the event of cancellation. That concludes the reports.
You know what I was saying, the number falls in August, it's going to snow, you don't have it. I count on it, I call it a dagger, baby.
Yeah, he does. He's one of them.
And it's going to be six degrees on November seventh.
That's right.
And I saw two black caterpillars yesterday.
Lily worms, caterpillars, balls, farmer's almond hack.
The next is the consent agenda.
Motion.
Aye. Dr. Bridges, any discussion on these items? Honorable favor?
Aye.
Repose, motion passes. Next is the action items, and the first one is request approved the school facilities construction commission, KETS, all of the systems.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Nancy.
Second.
Dr. Bridges, discussion on this item?
Well, you see the offer in the materials, KETS, you know, it's the Kentucky Education Technology System, and so this is money that's allocated to us for technology, and we have budgeted and prepared for this, because you have, we have to match this money dollar for dollar. It's a twenty-four thousand dollars, a twenty-four, a twenty-four thousand, twenty-four dollar offer, and we had this budgeted, and by the way, the board approved this offer.
Does this go to technology?
Yes, Scott Perdue and his team kind of manage this budget, and they have a technology plan, and we spend it according to, you know, that plan and the needs.
Question, Honorable favor?
Aye.
Repose. Next is request approved amended job description two point oh six, Secretary Administrative Assistant to Chief Operations Officer. Dr. Bridges?
Second.
Second. Hiding, discussion on this item?
You have a copy of the job description, propose, and just some minor changes, just to clarify that particular role in our central office here. So no change in days or pay, it's just clarifying these. And this particular person works with Amanda Deweese and Sarah Richardson, Finance and Food Service.
Questions, Honorable favor?
Aye.
Repose. Next is request approved emergency certification of making visits to Franklin Simpson High School reading adventure teacher.
Motion.
Second.
Dr. Bridges, discussion on this?
You have the request in your materials, essentially, based on the EPSD guidelines, she, we have to emergency certify her based on what she's teaching. Essentially, she's certified, but in order to be certified fully, she would need to be teaching fully in her, her content area, social studies, is that right?
Yes.
And she's doing an intervention position for us, and so, so while we're in the process of this year, she needs to be emergency certified for that role.
Questions coming? Honorable favor?
Aye.
Repose. Next is the approved proposal for a paraprofessional position at Simpson Elementary to remain in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, to be funded by grant funds.
Motion.
Second.
Hiding, discussion on this item?
Well, this, this kind of coincides with Mr. Kilburn's report, you know, where we identify some needs, and we have some, some students with particular needs, unique needs at Simpson Elementary, and it's really beyond what our, our current pass program structure can adequately and successfully serve, so we need to add this resource to provide these services, and to let that continue of a service that we talked about earlier, where these students need that kind of support, that they can be successful, so, Whitney and Shalina have worked with the school staff to do this, and we think it's an investment that we need to make.
I just have one question about the position. Is this something that as that particular group goes through the system, that, that additional assistance could also move with the group?
Possibly, but we are hoping, obviously, that, you know, we can wean them from this. I think the transition from Franklin Elementary to Simpson Elementary, they obviously don't transition as much with the flexible grouping and, you know, have more pairs on hand to assist them, so we're just trying to make that a smoother transition for them right now, but obviously, we do hope that next year, they're, they're ready to make some of those transitions.
They'll mature, you know, they're already maturing, so, but we'll monitor it. Maybe, you know, right now, we're not planning on making this a permanent, you know, but we'll just have to monitor and see, but we are hoping that, so, I got to outwork them either.
We did have Kathy Betsy from Greck that came down, and she specializes in behavior on Tuesday, particularly worked there and at the middle school. She spent the entire day, a half-day at each one, did some observations, worked with the teachers as well, too, and gave us some resources and some strategies that we could work with, and, and really specifically in teaching those social skills for those kids and transitioning, and so we're holding up the extra hands that will have time to do some of that teaching of the skills for them to be able to stay in the classroom.
Honorable favor?
Aye.
Repose. Next is approved the use of remaining Franklin Simpson Middle School extra bridge or travel budget from the grant funds.
Motion.
Nancy?
Second.
Dr. Bridges, discussion on this item?
Well, as you know, we've kind of had a budget practice of giving them an initial travel allocation, kind of trying to inspire them to live within that as much as possible, but typically, at some point, if they recognize based on their needs, that they need that initial funding, they'll come and ask for it, so, middle schools ask for it. Amanda, do you have any additional information? And, so, you can see the rationale of their travels.
No more questions? Honorable favor?
Aye.
Repose. Let's just move to the ground.
Motion.
Second.
Hiding, Honorable favor?